I call this meeting of Sylvania City Council for December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one to order. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Capellini.
Here.
Mr. Fry.
Here.
Mr. Hanum.
Absent.
Mr. McCann.
Here.
Mr. Richardson.
Here.
Ms. Stow.
Here.
Mrs. Westphal.
Here.
Six members of City Council are present, therefore a quorum does exist. I'd like to welcome all of you to our council chambers tonight, especially Boy Scout Troop one fifty-four. We're glad that you're here, and we would ask you to lead us in tonight's pledge of allegiance.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. It's my understanding you're here working on merit badges. We appreciate that. If there's any point during the meeting that you have questions about the proceedings, just raise your hand and I'll recognize you at the appropriate time. Moving on to additions to the agenda, actually I have a deletion tonight. We will take off thirteen A as the zoning and annexation committee meeting for this evening was canceled. Mr. Fry, any additions or deletions?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Members of City Council. Seeing none. Staff, Mr. Sanford. Mr. Schreier. Captain Miller. Captain Miller joined us tonight because Chief Snore is over at the graduation of our two cadets from the academy. And Mr. Aller.
Nothing.
Mrs. Brining.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, and our agenda is approved as amended for this evening. Agenda item four is approval of the meeting minutes from our next last meeting on December sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like him to move approval of the meeting minutes from council's meeting of December sixth, two thousand and twenty-one as submitted.
Second.
And moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes as submitted for December sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and they are approved. Agenda item five is our first business item. We have proposed ordinance seventy-nine, two thousand and twenty-one. This is the first of three ordinance tonight, ordinances tonight that are ordinances we typically do at the end of the year to square the books and to adjust salaries. First one is to make certain account allocations within the fund appropriations for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first. Mr. Schreier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our annual adjusting entry at the end of the year that we do each year. Mainly went really smooth this year, more smooth than usual, Aaron said, and the main thing I wanted to note to everyone is that city stayed within the original council-approved budget. All general funds, all operating funds, and all capital funds, and the water and sewer funds. Have to appropriate any extra funds what you guys approved this time last year. Request that council approve this.
Okay, you do have in your council packets ordinance seventy-nine, two thousand and twenty-one. Any questions for Mr. Schreier?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Fry.
Just one question, I think I already know the answer to, but just to get it out on the record. The personnel services for the, for the police officers, that's due to retirements and, and not having the full complement of forces that were originally budgeted, correct?
Correct. They were short staff mostly here.
Yeah. Thank you.
If there's no further questions, Mr. Fry, can we have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number seventy-nine dash two thousand and twenty-one and read by title only. To make certain adjustments to account allocations within the fund appropriations for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, I move adoption of ordinance number seventy-five dash two thousand and twenty-one as an emergency measure.
Second.
I believe you meant ordinance seventy-nine, and it's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance seventy-nine, two thousand and twenty-one as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance seventy-nine, two thousand and twenty-one is enacted as an emergency measure. Onto agenda item six. This is ordinance eighty, two thousand and twenty-one. This is to extend the contract with our accounting firm. Mr. Schreier.
Yes. What Schoenhardt and Associates does for us is they take our cash basis, financial reports at the end of the year. Convert that to accrual basis, which then gets, that's what gets audited by our state auditors each. We're coming off a three-year contract with them, their services, which was fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty each year. And their proposal for the next three years, another three-year contract, is for fifteen thousand dollars a year. They've been with the city for way before my time. I've been here nine years. They've been a lot longer than that. Our patient's recommendation.
This firm does the same work for many of the municipalities and governments around the area.
They're from down south.
Okay. Is an increase this year, I believe, of just?
About five point two percent going for seven hundred and fifty dollars more than what we've.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Schreier? Mr. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number eighty dash two thousand and twenty-one, and I will read, I would like to introduce by title only. Authorizing an agreement between Donald Jash, Schoenhardt, and Associates Incorporated and the City of Sylvania whereby said firm will assist the city in preparation of its two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, and two thousand and twenty-three basic financial statements, or BFSs, in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. At costs not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-one, fifteen thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-two, and fifteen thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-three plus mileage for each year. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. I move adoption of ordinance number eighty dash two thousand and twenty-one as an emergency measure.
It has been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance eighty, two thousand and twenty-one as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance eighty, two thousand and twenty-one is enacted as an emergency measure.
Eric, can I add that we haven't had any mileage? Everything's done. We haven't had any mileage. In the contract, but.
Very good. Onto item seven, which is making certain position and compensation pay plan changes salary, making certain salary wage and other service compensation adjustments. These are for our non-union employees. We are currently in contract negotiations with our union employees. Mr. Schreier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'm proposing, what the administration is proposing, two point five percent increase refers for all non-union employees that include court. That is what council approved in the budget, two point five percent. We're currently last raised with. Here it was also two point five percent.
Any questions for Mr. Schreier? Mr. Fry.
Mr. Schreier, just again for clarification purposes, since the union contracts haven't been finalized with the police or AFSCME. If the compensation to the AFSCME union contract or the police comes in higher, what would, what's the administration's position on adjusting that? Or if it comes in lower than the two and a half, what's the administration's position?
Nothing's been decided. Talks will have to happen.
If there's no further questions. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce ordinance number eighty-one, two thousand and twenty-one by title only. Making certain position and compensation pay plan changes, making certain salary, wage, and other service compensation adjustments to the codified ordinance of Sylvania nineteen seventy-nine as amended. And other ordinances by granting pay increases to the appointed officials whose titles are listed in section one thirty-nine point zero three, E three. By granting a two and one-half percent pay increase to all non-union city employees and court employees. Whose positions are included in the list of occupational titles of section one thirty-nine point zero two A of the codified ordinances of Sylvania. Which increases reflected in the annual wage rate schedule four of section one thirty-nine point one zero D of the Sylvania codified ordinances by granting pay increase. For some of the employees in the labor and trade supervision group, and I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance eighty-one, two thousand and twenty-one as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance eighty-one, two thousand and twenty-one is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you. And be assured, Mr. Fry, we will, if those negotiated contracts come in different, we will come back to you with an appropriate action.
I would.
Probably in the interest of fairness.
But I understand. I just wanted to get it on the record.
All right. Thank you. Onto agenda item eight. Your Aller is back to us with the final change order for the large diameter sanitary sewer lining project phase one. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The final change order that you have in front of you is, I'm sure you've noticed, a little larger than normal. But some, I'll say extenuating circumstances or just happenstance situation. That's the reason for the cost. The total increase of this final change order is two hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and two cents. The largest share of that increase is some additional work that we had done. Add about six hundred and fifty feet of sewer that we had originally put off on, for future phases. But because of the excellent pricing that we got on this phase of the project. Coupled with the fact that we had grant monies available for this phase of the project due to the low cost of the bid. We decided to add that six hundred, this phase, and make use of those grant funds. The way grants work, we had a seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred dollar grant from OPWC. And the way that program works, it's done on a percentage basis. So by the bids coming in at about one point one dollars, we were going to end up leaving about three hundred thousand dollars worth of money basically on the. So because of that, and because the work was similar, we were able to add that six hundred and fifty feet to the project. And that added about almost a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars towards the cost of. That's the lion's share of it. The second largest share of it was an adjustment in the resin prices. We all know the problems that Texas had this year with the ice storms and things of that nature. It disrupted the production and delivery of resins that are used in the product. And the contractor saw prices, at the time of the bid, they were seeing prices from ninety-five cents to a dollar. They planned on about a dollar three was what they put in. But the prices, when they actually came time to purchase the product, was closer to a dollar forty. And. I think here twenty thousand pounds of resin used on this project. So that, that's a pretty large impact to the, to the project. So they requested a different pricing conditions, it's called. It's a section that's in. This wasn't an ODOT project, but it's a section that's in the ODOT contract for things typically on ODOT projects, it's used for petroleum prices when they take a sudden. And so they requested a increase based on that, and that was a total of sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. So that was an unforeseen cost on everybody's part. Another item that was, smaller items that were part of the project, we had at one point the large flows that we had, the rains that we had during November. The flows, we had informed the contractor that he could plan on max day flow of five and a half gallons per. That was based on historical records over the last four years. During those rains in November, the Sylvania Avenue pumping station itself was pumping over eleven million. A flow that that station, station hadn't seen since two thousand and eight. We were a little bit lucky in that the contractor didn't have any material that was in the pipe here or anything of that nature. But when we came up to do this, this section at Central Avenue, where we're closing Central Avenue four days. We wanted another pump on site. Because if that happened again during that Central Avenue closure, we could not say, well, we'll be back. It had to be done during. So the contractor brought another pump on site. That five thousand dollars is just the rental cost. They didn't charge any overhead of that nature. It's just straight rental cost from Ohio Cat.
Increased flow, as we discussed, was caused by infiltration due to the heavy rain. And we discussed that the majority of that is most likely coming from Lucas County customers or sections, not from the city pipe. Perhaps you should clarify that.
Yeah, the, the Sylvania Avenue pumping station is kind of an odd situation. That station is actually a city-owned station that's within our service area. But eighty to eighty-five percent of the flow that goes to that station actually comes from the Lucas County sanitary engineers service area. And so the lion's share of that inflow and infiltration is actually coming, it actually comes from east. From like Cory Road and Sylvania Avenue. It's where the lion's share of that. They were actually when we send them this quarter, but I've already given, I've already had talks with them because that eighty to eighty-five is this month, they're going to be about ninety-eight percent of the flow to that station. Sure they would have questioned, have called them. But it's, it is a problem area. It's a station that we've talked in here that we're, we're taking a look at having to rebuild and update. And it's an area that we're asking sanitary engineers off us to take a hard look at the. We started doing that in our system. We've put some flow meters in it. Fast sanitary. Sections of the system. So that has a big impact. The last larger, little bit, little larger item was Central McCord. Same thing with the, with the Central Avenue closure that we had. We had a section there that when we got into the piping, the extended pipe method that we had planned on using wasn't going to work. Because of a Lucas County force main that comes in. Comes into our trunks or in a different method than what the show. Because of that, we would have had to have piping setting on McCord Road. The traffic that would have caused, we would have had traffic going through that strip center there on the southeast corner of Central Avenue forward. Obviously, we couldn't add. That, that's thousands of vehicles, tens of thousands. So we had the contractor modify that. We had him bury the piping. We had to cut into the, bury the piping, obviously repair the pavement when we're done. And all of that work came to a change of about sixteen thousand dollars. Finally, the last item is a, is a small item. Amount of water that was used on the project when we were in our water service area, which this phase was a very small section. When, when we were in our water service area, we just provided the water. It made sense to charge the contract for him to charge us, and so we just provided the water. However, a large share of this project was actually outside of our water service area and sanitary engineers service area. So the contractor, per the contract, the contractor. For that amount, and that came to one thousand eight hundred dollars. So when you add all of that up, it comes to the total figure of two hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars, ninety-two cents. That brings a total project cost of one million, four hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars, forty-two cents. Still well within, the original estimate on this project was one point seven seven. Our final number is at one point four four million. Still well within the original project budget. We're making use of as much of the grant funds. Well, it is a larger number than we typically would even care to see on a project. We believe. Worthwhile and well spent. Well spent.
Getting more work done with grants funds is a good goal. The next phase of this, as I recall, is a low-interest loan, not a grant.
We also have grants, a combination, the next phase is a combination of grant loan. Have a third phase that already worked on, we don't have any established for that yet. But this will be a three-phase project. The second phase is about the same size as this one. I think about one point six five million. I will be coming to you soon, actually forward. That council gave us authorization to advertise that and come for the second. That we bids, I believe the first. Somehow those come in.
Mr. Aller.
Yes.
Can I, can, from your report, the hundred? Can I, can, from your report, the $153,000, had that been a separate, stand on its own bid, probably, possibly would have been more?
Yes, yeah, I would definitely, I would definitely, I don't think there's any question that it would have.
So economies of scale worked in our benefit here.
Definitely. Yeah, we were pleasantly surprised at the bid numbers that we got for this project. Obviously, VJ Sewer is, we benefited a little bit in that they're trying to increase their presence in Ohio. They're a very large company in the Wisconsin area, they're trying to increase their presence in Ohio, and I think we benefited in them wanting this project. They were a great contractor, they were very.
I did watch them on Slovenia Avenue and McCord, and they were pretty well organized. They welded a lot of pipe that you could see, and I saw no leakage, smelled no leakage, no problem at all. If there's no further questions, Mr. McCann, would you like to introduce this legislation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number 82-2021 to authorizing the mayor and director of finance to approve change order number two final to this city's agreement with VJ Sewer of Ohio LLC for the Large Diameter Sanitary Sewer Lining Project Phase One, which reflects the installed bid quantities and the actual work performed on this project, increasing the contract amount by $243,384.92. Appropriating funds therefore, I move passage of ordinance number 82-2021 as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance 82-2021 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries an ordinance 82-2021 is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you. Mr. Aller. All right, moving on to agenda item nine. This is an ordinance we need to do anytime we do an annexation, but I'll let the law director give more information about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the annexation of Centennial Terrace that was approved by the county commissioners back in May, and as the mayor indicated, this is just the final official step that we have to take before it is in the city officially. It's approximately 17 acres and includes the terrace property and a little bit of the surrounding area, so I would recommend it's.
Just to remind city council, this annexation was part of the agreement when we worked on the annexation and jet agreement last year. City council actually approved it back in February 16th, the annexation agreement, and it has been non-controversial, the township trustees approved it, has not been confrontational in any way. We continue to work with them on expanded jet areas and on some smaller annexations that are adjacent to the city limits that wish to use the city's water, and those, there is a formula in the annexation agreement for those to be done without any controversy or problems. And Mr. Schroyer wanted me to point out to you that also as a part of this annexation agreement, the city has received its first payment of $75,000 from the township. This is to reimburse the city the value of the inside millage. It's one half a mill of inside village which, or millage which was originally decades ago. No one can quite remember how it got started, but was used for fire department dispatching. Well, we all pay a property tax for the fire department that that should be included in, so as part of the negotiations, we are starting to work away at the value of that half mill. The first two years are $75,000, the third and fourth years are $125,000, the fifth year will be $225,000 reimbursed to the city, and after that, it will be whatever the actual half a mill that's collected by the township is. So this, this goes back to this annexation and jet agreement, it's all working out very well. I have contact with the three trustees and with the township administrator. Both sides are very pleased with the way this annexation agreement is working out, but this annexation was a part of that annexation agreement. You do have in your packets ordinance 83-2021 to accept this annexation for the City of Slovenia. With Mr. Hanam not here tonight, I call upon Mrs. Westfall to read this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 83-2021, accepting for annexation to the City of Slovenia, Ohio, the territory described in annexation petition number 2021-1, for which Leslie B. Briening is the agent, and as here and after described, providing for the interim zoning of said territory. I move final passage of ordinance number 83-2021 as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance 83-2021 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries an ordinance 83-2021 is enacted as an emergency measure. Agenda item 10 is the plant commission's recommendation concerning special use permit for 2021. That's a special use permit for a medical marijuana dispensary facility at 5625 West Alexis Road. That is the Slovenia Diner, the exact square footage of the restaurant, not the entire building, but the restaurant square footage. It includes a new door and a secure area to the back of that property. We had the property owner at the plant commission, I believe he was here at the city council two weeks ago, he gave the same description that there are, that he is involved in a lottery. There is one medical marijuana dispensary that will be awarded in Lucas County. They are currently going through the applications at the state of Ohio to remove the ones that do not meet the legislative requirements for that lottery. By turning in his special use permit application, he was able to check off one of the boxes on the zoning and believes he does meet the requirements of the state of Ohio. The plant commission, after listening to that information and reviewing city council's ordinance, I believe it dated back to 2018, that allowed these medical marijuana dispensaries to be opened only in properly zoned property, which is M1 or M2 property in the City of Slovenia. They determined that it did indeed meet the intent of city council and your legislation, and recommended back to you that this be approved for a special use permit for that purpose. The only business to do tonight is to set a public hearing of February 7th, 2022, as determined by the clerk as the first available council meeting night that meets the advertising requirement. Are there any questions before we call for a motion to set that date? Hearing none, Mrs. Capellini, you're also on the zoning and annexation committee, would you like to set that meeting?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we set the public hearing for the medical marijuana facility at 625 West Alexis Road for February for public meeting. How long do we, seven?
Let's say seven. If it runs long, we can delay the council meeting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to set the public hearing for SUP 4-2021 on Monday, February the 7th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in these council chambers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the clerk is ordered to advertise that public hearing. Moving on to page two of our agenda, I have two confirmations of appointments that I ask for your approval of, for your confirmation of my appointments. First one is for Kathleen Fisher for the municipal planning commission, with the term starting January 1st, 2022 and ending in, on December 31st, 2025. She is currently a member of the planning commission and does very good work for us, so I ask for your confirmation of her. Mr. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that council confirms the appointment of Ms. Kathleen Fisher to the Slovenia Municipal Planning Commission.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Kathleen Fisher to the municipal plan commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 12 is asking for your confirmation of the mayor's reappointment of Bradford James to the civil service commission. This is a longer term, it's a six-year term. He has served more than one term on there, he might be up to a term and a half or two terms. I spoke with him last Thursday, and he immediately accepted a reappointment, so I ask for your confirmation of Bradford James. Mr. Fry.
Mr. Mayor, given that this is Mrs. Capellini's last meeting, and this is the last item on the agenda, if you don't mind, I would like to defer this to.
Certainly don't mind.
To Mrs. Capellini.
Okay.
To make this.
It's motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fry. I move that we reappoint Mr. Bradford James to the Slovenia Service, Slovenia Civil Service Commission.
Second.
Moved and seconded to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Bradford James to the civil service commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Mr. James is reappointed. Agenda item 13 is canceled, or 13A is canceled. Are there any other committee reports or committee referrals to be made at this time? Hearing none, in the information section of the packet, you have the board of architectural review meeting minutes and the municipal planning meeting minutes from last week on December the 15th. If there's no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, may I bring up, I would just like to acknowledge Mrs. Capellini's 14 years of service on Slovenia City Council. Thank you for your commitment to the city, your passion for the Parks and Forest area, and for your continued participation in all things with the city.
There's no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and this council is adjourned until its next regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, January the 3rd, 2022, with an organizational meeting starting at 7:15, and the open council meeting beginning at 7:30. Thank you all for attending. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all.